Tomorrow is our first ever show choir competition that we are hosting at Standing Bear. It's called the Summit.
We'll have eighteen groups from ten different schools and they'll be bringing their show choirs, their show bands, their families, and we'll host them for a day of competition and educational experience, too.
I'm honored to be like a part of the like the inaugural season of the Renegades and I feel like it's just a lot of pressure, but like also a lot of fun because nobody has expectations for your for your school yet. Like you don't have a name yet, but you're going to be the person to set that bar for your school.
This is its own kind of ecosystem and own subculture that a lot of people don't know about.
I've really liked to be here because I feel like I belong and everyone wants me here and it's just, it's a family. And I've also been a very hard worker. I've learned a lot. I've learned how to push through and that my brain will give up faster than my body will. I just learned to keep going and it'll pay off.
And I think that what I want people to take away from show choir is that it's just a lot of fun and it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun.
One of the exciting things I think about show choir as an art form is that it does change so rapidly. And you actually see kind of a parallel between what we would call traditional show choir and more of a theatrical, more contemporary group. And so that's kind of fun to see those types of schools sort of go to head to head in a way. It's almost like two different things happening, but it makes a really diverse viewing experience, for sure.
I remember being in eighth grade and talking to my counselor about which school I was going to go to. And she was like, if you go to Standing Bear, you'll be able to pave the way for everyone. You'll make traditions. You'll make it like a good place to be.
I think that the Renegades have become more of a family to me than anything else. I love these people that are around me and I think that we have formed an amazing community here at Standing Bear.
I hope that that the show choir becomes known as, you know, the positive, welcoming, empathetic, creative group of kids on campus. Yeah, definitely try and find a time to go watch show choir performance because it's it's worth watching.
We call this meeting of the Lincoln Board of Education for February 11th to order? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Mr. Boswell is excused.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Mr. Shavastov?
Present.
Dr. Rowner?
Dr. Rowner is excused.
Mrs. Danick?
I'm here.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Lot is posted between the doors behind the back of the room. We have before us a set of minutes from January 28th, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they stand approved as posted. Tonight, we have special reports, presentations, and celebrations of success. Annie Mumgarth, would you please take this take this away?
Absolutely. Well, Betsy Barrett, please meet me up front. Come on down. Well, first of all, I have to say it's just a real joy to do this. I've actually had the pleasure of getting to work with Betsy Barrett here on scientific things. She's the scientist I was not, so I helped with the things. You helped with the science. And so I think this is a quite, it's been a pleasure always to work with you, always learn something. So I'm sure this is quite a deserved honor. Thank you very much. So I would like to put this forward as a motion. Whereas Lincoln Public Schools K-12 Science Curriculum Specialist Betsy Barrett was recently honored by the Nebraska Association of Teachers of Science with a Catalyst Award, and whereas Betsy Barrett has sparked the passion and interest of science for many students through her teaching and curriculum work, and whereas Betsy Barrett provided outstanding leadership and worked collaboratively in implementing the Nebraska Department of Education and next generation science standards, and whereas Betsy Barrett is highly admired and respected by her colleagues, not only at LPS, but across the state and the nation, now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Betsy Barrett on her achievement of the Catalyst Award from the Nebraska Association of Teachers of Science, and for those of us in the know, Nats. And it's signed by Bob Bronner and Dr. John Skretta. Congratulations.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to thank not nearly enough people. First of all, thank you, Board of Education. You make everything we do in science possible and I'm very grateful for your support. And then the Nats Board, the Nebraska Association of Teachers of Science, who has worked hard to create equity across the state of Nebraska for all of our students as well as our teachers through professional learning. And then I would really be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Takaka Olson, who has put her faith in me. I very much appreciate her collaboration and her guidance. And then I'd like to really thank Dr. John Skretta because he saw something in me that I don't think I saw in myself and helped me gain the courage to take on leadership roles. And then I'd like to thank my family because they've put up with me being gone a lot when I'm out leading professional learning, supporting other school districts, going out for my own professional learning at at conferences. And I really want to thank my mom and dad because they were my teachers growing up. They were both educators. And as my mom will say, you always said you'd never be a teacher, but but here I am. And that's that's what's in my heart and science is my passion. Thank you.
Is there a second to Ms. Mumgarth's motion? Don?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes, and congratulations. Moving on, we have a presentation for the LPS Grow Your Own Career Pathways. Let's see, is that you, Van?
It is. So thank you, Board of Education. We are really pleased to bring an update as part of our strategic plan. We are looking to work in increasing the number of certified as well as classified staff. And one of the programs that we're very, very proud of that we're seeing some really positive dividends for is the Grow Your Own. And so Barb Miller, who is our empowerment specialist that works there, works in that program, as well as Kara Lucas-Rick for Early Childhood, will share just a little bit of information.
Good evening and thank you so much for the invitation to share some updates about what's going on with our Grow Your Own projects. My name is Barb Miller, as Dr. Price shared, and I'm the Emerging Educators Empowerment Specialist for the district. So I've been working with our Grow Your Own for the last couple of years, and I am excited to share some of the initiatives that we've got going on with our parent-to-teachers pathways, apprenticeships, and avenues. We have three current parent-to-special education teachers cadres. Our first pathway is in the last, the last semesters of the second year, it started in fall of 2023 and is slated to end in the spring of 2026. It's a two and a half year program, and it was offered to current paras that have baccalaureate degrees already and gives them an opportunity to pursue and complete a certification to become special education teachers. They are working as paras with the district and taking evening classes, online classes, and summer. One of the exciting pieces about this is that with this first parent pathway, we should have 12 eligible hires for special education teachers by the fall of 2025 or the spring of 2026. And I split that because we will have some that will start their student teaching in the fall and will and have applied for a hire during their student teaching. And then others will choose a more traditional student teaching and then they will finish in the spring of 2026. This first parent-to-teacher pathway is a combination or a partnership with LPS and UNL. And the participants in this cadre have signed a three-year commitment to work for LPS for the next three years as LPS and UNL have both put, have interest in their tuition. So we have worked together to cover their tuition. And since we had that partnership already, we had an opportunity for our cadre two. And our cadre two actually started in the spring of 2024 and will continue through the spring of 2025. The one thing that is interesting about this or a little bit different is that it is actually a registered apprenticeship. It is a one-year apprenticeship that is registered with the Department of Labor. NDE actually applied for this grant. And since we already had that that partnership with UNL, we were actually one of the first to have an opportunity to to participate in this registered apprenticeship. The apprenticeship is competency based, so the the students actually worked during the summer and got a very strong foundational foundation of special education during their last summer. And then they moved into their apprenticeship starting in fall of this year. And with the apprenticeship, they are working with a CT that we actually call journey workers because it is a registered apprenticeship. And they work with the journey worker for the full year, learning how to be teachers on the job. It is competency based so that they are tested on, judged on, their mastery of the skills that NDE has put out for teacher preparation. And the exciting thing about this is that we have seven that are in that current partnership and so that we will have seven eligible hires to begin 2025 again for our special education department. And then since, and again, these things just kind of followed, since we already had the apprenticeship, NDE expanded their grant. And so we were automatically offered the opportunity for our for our paras to become a part of this next apprenticeship. So in January of this year, our third apprenticeship actually started. This one is a two and a half year apprenticeship. It will finish in the spring of 2027. And we actually offered this to classified staff. And I want to go back and share with the second cadre has classified staff as well. And an interesting note about that is not only do we have paras that are participating, but we also have techs, behavior techs, that are looking at and interest in in specializing specializing in behavior in the special ed department, as well as we have a local sub and an executive secretary. And they've all moved into para positions so that they will get their certification. For this last one, again, it's competency based, so it's on the on-the-job training. We are learning and tweaking as we go. So this cadre is matched up or paired up, not necessarily with a journey worker, but they're working with the special education departments so that they get education from all of the members that are a part of that team so that they get multiple experiences. And again, the exciting thing about this piece is that then in the fall of 2027, we will have nine additional hires. So within the next four years with our Grow Your Own, we actually have 28 teachers that will be certified to teach special education. And I'm going to turn it over now for some additional Grow Your Own information.
Thanks for the opportunity to share an update about our early childhood Grow Your Own initiative. It's what we call the Early Childhood Avenues Program. We actually have three avenues or three tracks for those that we are working with. Track A, B, and C, and I'll talk a little bit about those this evening. Avenue A is our partnership with UNL, specifically the College of Youth and Child, Youth and Family Studies Department at UNL. These are students who are in their junior year at UNL. They are all pursuing an early childhood inclusive degree and certification. The great thing about that is it makes them eligible for any of the four certified teaching positions in our department in early childhood. We started this work with UNL in June, and shortly after that, UNL applied for and was awarded an apprenticeship grant from the Department of Education and the Department of Labor, specifically for preparing inclusive early childhood educators in LPS. We currently have eight students from UNL that we've accepted into Avenue A. Our plan was to start that work in that cohort with them later this year, but we were able to move that up. And these eight actually started this program in January. This partnership with UNL resulted in some restructuring of their course sequence and course structure. And a really significant part of this program is that these eight students are working in our early childhood or primary classrooms in our schools right now. So these eight students spend anywhere from three to five half days a week, working alongside skilled, seasoned, early childhood professionals, learning about being an early childhood educator in LPS. We have five of those students at Everett, one at Campbell, one at Hartley, and then one will start her program this summer. We're really excited about this work and looking forward to some further development to add additional cohorts, hopefully in the fall. Avenue B, we've just accepted two participants in that program. These happen to be current early childhood para educators who have been in our department for at least a couple of years. They happen to be attending UNK's Early Childhood Inclusive Program. They are pretty far along. This is more of an individualized path for each of them. One of them is completing her student teaching this semester and will complete student teaching and early intervention this summer and be a summer graduate eligible for hire. The other one will be close behind. She is eligible for her certificate later this summer and will complete some final coursework and eligible for hire in August. We're really excited about this work as well. And then our Avenue C is in progress. This avenue still is requiring some additional work in programming and planning, and we are looking forward to starting that soon. The intent of this avenue is these are students who or individuals who are have not yet had the opportunity to pursue a degree, but have hopes of pursuing an early childhood degree and becoming early childhood educators. So what's next for this Early Childhood Avenues? Those 10 participants that I talked about in Avenue A and Avenue B are invited to a signing ceremony that's actually scheduled for tomorrow. We're going to continue our work with UNL on the pilot that we started in January, continue our work with UNL as far as looking at additional cohorts and bringing on some additional participants. And then our ultimate goal with all of this is that these partnerships in this work helps to increase our early childhood workforce and the diversity of our workforce as well. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, Barb?
Well, first of all, I really want to congratulate both of you on excellent programming. This is very hopeful to be able to grow our own. I just have a few questions. First of all, in these apprenticeship situations, do we or the grant help with the tuition with that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a huge boon for people. Yeah, that's great. The other one that was, you know, I hear that we have a difficult time filling the ranks of school counselors. And I was wondering if it would be possible in the future to consider going and taking some of our certificated staff and going and providing maybe apprenticeship approach and tuition help with filling those ranks as well? That'd be great. Well, thank you so much for a wonderful report and really excellent programming.
Thank you.
Annie, then Don.
Just that I agree, this is always very fun to hear about these and how an idea can grow and grow. If you are listening to this, or how does someone say, yes, I'd like to be next, to join like whatever's coming next, be in your next cadres? What would happen? What do they need to do?
They could reach out to Barb. We get some contacts frequently about individuals who are interested in pursuing this. So we're collecting that information and as we are able to expand, we have some lists of people to invite.
Do you see it going on? I mean, I know we have three cadres and special ed and early childhood, but it sounds like in '26, '27, does it, is it going to go on?
We hope so.
We are, we are already getting contacted by a couple of other educational institutions that are interested. They are getting grant funding, and so they are interested in partnering with us. So I think we've only just begun. I think we're just scratching the surface of this. So we're really, really excited about it.
It's good to hear. Thank you. And congratulations and good work. Thank you.
Don?
First, congratulations. That is a great presentation. And I know that other districts are struggling to hire as much as we are. And that was going to be my comment as well. I suspect as we continue to make progress in hiring for hard-to-fill positions or increasing diversity, that other districts are going to be interested in how we are using this as a creative solution to try to address some of the hiring shortages. So well done, ladies. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So I know what an apprentice is when I'm out in the labor force. So walk me through the apprenticeship as a para to a teacher. So they become a fully certificated teacher. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Say it loud so they can hear it on TV.
Yes, they do. They they are earning their certification so that they, at the end, are eligible for for hire as a special education teacher.
And so I'm going to go one step further because that's really good news. We also have a shortage of paras. So do we have a growth to a para somewhere in here so that we can keep growing this program?
To be honest, we have had a number of people reach out to become paras because they've heard about the program.
Wonderful. That's great news because you want to keep that pipeline filled all the way down or it comes to an end.
Absolutely.
So I'm glad you were thinking ahead and anticipating the question. I appreciate all you're doing. This is, this is a nationwide, statewide, citywide issue, and I'm glad we're dealing with it upfront. So good job. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. It is the point on the agenda for public comment. I do not have any blue cards, so we will move on. We are down to the consent agenda. You have three items on your consent agenda: Human Resource Matters, Routine, Business, and Option Enrollment. Is there a motion? Annie?
I move that we approve Consent Agenda 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Is there a second? Barb?
I second that.
Are there any conflict statements? Piusch?
I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on Agenda Item 8.2A as to all matters identified in and reflected by my separate potential conflict of interest statement hereby filed. My vote in favor of consent is a vote in favor of all other consent items except those identified in that statement upon which I have and do hereby abstain.
Thank you. So Laura, would you please call the roll to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, items for first reading. Action at the next meeting. We'll start with Item 9.1.1, the policy from Human Resources. And it says, Van Price and Lanny Boswell. So Van, would you like to take this since Lanny is not here today?
Sure. We are just, this is just to update some anti-retaliation language in our Policy 4880, which is anti-harassment and discrimination. So it's adding maybe nine to 10 words.
Okay.
Yeah.
Discussion, questions? All right. This will come back for you in two weeks. Item 9.1.2 is the student calendar for '25, '26, and it has Dr. Skretta, please.
Thank you. So want to provide a little bit of background and context for this. There's some descriptive explanation in the Agenda Item details there for you. Wanted to expand upon that a little bit, though. First off, to
First off, to just kind of mention a few words about the structure and service of the LEA/LPS Joint Calendar Committee. That's one of the committees who's specifically denoted in the negotiated agreement, and so I wanted to thank Lanny Boswell for serving as this year's board member designee and for his support and attendance at our first semester meetings, and also wanted to thank, she's here tonight, and I know she's got her eyes on another Agenda item in particular that's coming up yet, but Deb Rasmussen, our LEA president, serves as co-chair of the Joint Calendar Committee. And the first item here for you tonight is a requested revision of a single-day change to accommodate the notion that beginning with a full five-day student day week at the start of the school year made for a more difficult and challenging transition to the commencement of the fall semester. And when that occurred here in the fall, teachers and others looked at the calendar for '25, '26, and both board members and Superintendent Gossman then, and also LEA, were contacted by numerous teachers and staff members who subsequently, this request was directed, as appropriate protocol, to the Joint Calendar Committee for consideration of a one-day change that we would accommodate. Beginning then, the request is to begin the school year on Tuesday, August 12, instead of Monday, August 11. That would modify therefore the end of quarter one, which would subsequently conclude on Friday, October 10, instead of being a non-student day. Yeah, so that's kind of the initial explanation on that one.
Questions? I have a question for clarification.
Sure.
So on the first school day this year, are we changing that, that the only students that will be in school on the first day are which grades?
Okay, thank you for queuing that up. Dr. Salem?
All right, so actually really exciting. We have a proposal from some of our elementary principals who were looking at what middle school does with a sixth-grade day and looking at what high school does with a ninth-grade day. We brought this to the Student Learning Committee to replicate that at the kindergarten level, and our elementary principals were saying things like, what if it was just kindergartners for a full day, that first day of school, where they could learn their classmates' names and they could slow down? We could even take a longer lunch because they don't know how to open their milk sometimes and carry lunch trays. So there was pretty unanimous support amongst our elementary principals who had also been talking to their teachers about what makes that first day of school special. What could we do to really make all students come to school that first day as kindergartners and want to come back the next day? That would be the goal. So they're already thinking about all of the ideas they have, from pep rallies to having older kids come and talk to kids about being a good student, so they have lots of ideas, and they're starting to put some of those plans together.
So then school starts for everybody on Wednesday?
You got it. So the first day of school will be for kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade.
Perfect. I just want to make sure parents hear it correctly.
You got it.
As many times as we can.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Salem. Any other questions? All right, so now we have the student calendar for '26, '27.
Yeah. Okay, so not to belabor the point, but the Joint Calendar Committee really does a great deliberative and democratic process around that. We also gathered additional input and perspective from, I think Dr. Salem alluded, to groups like parent advisory and our teacher advisory to have a preview of that, and that Joint Calendar Committee includes principal, teacher, LEA, HR, representation. So a really good deliberative group that looked at bringing forward this recommendation for '26, '27 calendar, which, not coincidentally, modeled off the 1920 calendar, and school year would begin Wednesday, August 12, Semester One concluding December 22, last student day, May 20.
Were you serious about the 1920 calendar?
I, I was, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Whoa.
We all know what happened in the spring of 2020, that, that being said, the calendar worked.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? Annie?
So, Dr. Neil can keep me honest on this. I was the board member there when we made this calendar. This one also starts on a Wednesday. Why are we changing the '25, '26 day to start on a Tuesday, and yet this calendar is still starting on a Wednesday?
Yeah, good question. In essence, because as we looked at start date and end of the first semester, we could only find a day in the deliberations within the Calendar Committee that we could move, so we made that one-day kind of recommendation rather than starting on a Wednesday. So if we started on a Wednesday in '25, '26, the prior calendar we were discussing, the one-day change on, that would push us to, we simply couldn't recapture another day there prior to the end of the first semester.
So it's more capturing that day versus starting on a Tuesday versus a Wednesday?
Yep, yep, correct.
I believe I thought we had some teachers' comments of like, because we, the first day of school, not everybody's there, we're actually breaking some of our calendar rules of having people come to class for only two days, so that's not a consideration. I was there for this discussion, you'd think I'd remember, I don't remember. I'm sure we had a reason we started on the Wednesday versus, but it seems to me like it's the same issue.
Yeah, yep.
We're not going to be making that change?
It's a, it's a challenging issue because, and as, as you well know, Annie, from your service on the Calendar Committee, there's a number of both primary and secondary calendar variables that come into consideration, and they typically, calendars and life is a series of trade-offs, so we end up meeting most of those variables, and not in every year are we able to meet each of them.
So this would be a case of, this is just how we have to start, is on the Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay, because we don't have an extra day to find, because we also have other, that's part of the issues of finding so many days within each quarter, is that correct?
Yeah, and we looked at, we looked at different, we looked at a full-week start, and we looked at that partial week, and just tested those ideas with different groups, providing input on it to get their perspective.
So the worst that will happen is that we'll start on a Tuesday this year, and if people really like it, we'll be back here next spring going, okay, the next calendar, you may need to come back on Tuesday.
Right, right.
Okay, good to know.
Ongoing conversations on the calendar.
Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, Item 9.1.2 and 9.1.3 will come back in two weeks, and we're moving on from the superintendent. We have the proposed negotiated agreement with the Lincoln Education Association, and that's speakers are Dr. Van Price and Blake Simpson.
Very good, thank you. We are very, very pleased, as Dr. Skretta said, to partner with LEA and have come up with a negotiated agreement between LEA and Lincoln Public Schools, so we've reached that tentative agreement, and Blake's going to just highlight some of our agreements.
Thank you very much. I'm Blake Simpson, Director of Employee Relations, Benefits, and Personnel with LPS. I'm also the chief negotiator for our various labor agreements, and I'd like to share a few highlights of this year's negotiated agreement with the Lincoln Education Association. Before I begin, I do want to thank a few people involved in that process. I certainly want to thank Deb Rasmussen, the LEA president, and the Lincoln Education Association, particularly their table team of negotiators, Matt Herb, Chief Negotiator for LEA, Mindy Diller, Megan Simsek, Jeff Pierce, Nicole Lopez-Bettendorf, Michael Rainier, Todd Tystad, and Teresa Matthews with LEA. We have a lot of tough conversations at the table, but a good, productive, collaborative relationship with LEA that resulted in this agreement. I also want to thank the LPS Board and your support of the educational profession through this agreement, members of the executive team who contributed to our LPS negotiations team. Of course, I want to make sure Nancy Hoppy with LPS gets recognized too for all her work behind the scenes to make this possible. I'll share a few of the highlights here, starting with the financial terms of the agreement. We've reached a one-year agreement with LEA, and that includes a 3.8% total package increase financially for this next year. Of that, the amount devoted to salary is 3.55%. Base salary increases by $1,000 to $49,556. Our health insurance increase through the Educators Health Alliance was 5.49%, a little bit more than last year, which was 1.99%, but industry-wise, 5.49% is really strong. I know EHA worked very hard to get that increase down to a more manageable amount. One thing to point out is the out-of-pocket increase split this year versus what we've done most of the last prior years since going to our current four-tier system back in 2008. Really, there's only been one other time where we've shared that out-of-pocket increase, where employees have seen a little bit of an increase in their monthly out-of-pocket. That happened in 2020. So we did share that, split that increase, 20% on employees' out-of-pocket, 80%. The actual percentage that they are contributing month-to-month isn't going to change appreciably, even though the dollar amount will slightly. Some of the main contract changes I want to point out, and really, a couple of things on this slide we were trying to get at is, one, trying to reward and recognize experienced professionals in the certificated group, and finding some ways to reward them and keep them in the profession, and also to provide some more assistance to people who are new to LPS. So first off, rewarding experience, we're doing a couple of things at Step 15 on the salary schedule, which equates to 22 years' experience in the district. One of those is we're going to unveil it. It's basically a leave buyback program for those staff members who have not only 22 years' experience, but 1,000 hours and their accumulated leave bank to be able to access some of that payout earlier. It's cost-neutral because they would have been entitled to that same payout amount at any way, at any rate, if they had separated from the district at this point in their career. And also, at Step 15, those employees will begin to accrue two additional days of annual leave, so if you're on the Option B leave plan, instead of 11 days at the beginning of the year, you'll start to accrue 13 days of leave. On the other side, new hires, we'd had something in the agreement, it was a $1,500 advance, and that had worked pretty well for several years, but it wasn't being utilized, we'd noticed when we looked at the numbers in recent years, and $1,500 over time had kind of become less impactful. It was more paperwork for the employee, more paperwork for payroll. So one of the things we've worked out with LEA is new-to-LPS hires will be put on a 13-month pay plan their first year with the district. So instead of 12 checks, 13 checks, same overall gross salary, and that first check will arrive sooner. Instead of September 30, it'll be like the first week of September, so more impactful, more immediate assistance to them. And then year two and after, they go to the same 12-month pay schedule that everybody else is going to be on. A few other language changes I just want to highlight, there's something in the contract called the voluntary transfer deadline, a very official-sounding term, but really what that just refers to is internal postings, and when we have to open up positions to internal versus external posting. We changed that deadline for the last one of those postings that's subject to that rule from the last week in June to the first week in June. It strikes a better balance with giving employees an opportunity, right, who are already here to apply for positions, but also would allow us to open up that external candidate pool for some of those postings a little bit more quickly to make sure we're adequately staffed. We did agree to study through a joint pro-comm committee with LEA whether a optional period for elementary staff is feasible. So that's just one of the things. It's not a guarantee it will happen, but we're going to sit down with a group with LEA and LPS and see if there's a way to make that a possibility. Another major change to point out involves elementary supervision time, and it's not so much a change, except capturing in the contract a practice we've had in place for a number of years. Sorry about that. With LEA, with LEA, that had originally been part of a memorandum of understanding years ago, but it's just going to provide greater clarity about when we can assign supervision time to elementary staff and at what point compensation would kick in. The practice isn't really changing, it's just more formalized in the contract. And the last main changes I want to highlight, there are going to be changes to how professional time is structured for certificated personnel. Now outward-facing, one of the huge accomplishments we had last year was having one calendar for all grade levels rather than three, so externally, there's not really going to be a change that students and families will see. Staff will, because we are tailoring a lot of that professional learning and planned time based on, you know, grade level, there's going to be some variation. So that's more meaningful for employees internally, what that structure's going to look like going forward. And then the last really main set of changes involves, we call them blackout dates, but really, those are the dates, I use the internal lingo. It's really the dates where staff can have pre-arranged absences and when they're limited from doing that, and we did alter what, what dates, based on our review of the data, and when we looked at actual absences, staff were utilizing their, their leave. Are there any questions about the proposed agreement?
Questions, colleagues?
Thank you, and thank you to LEA. I mean, I think it should be noted, we have talked about this, so that's like, so everyone doesn't think, how do they know questions about a contract? We've had plenty, several conversations about this, and my understanding, I mean, very nice to hear that LEA and LPS has figured out some, negotiated some, really some nice changes, not, nothing like with fireworks, but sometimes we don't need fireworks, we need some simple things to make life go easier, so thank you for everybody's work on this.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, I too want to offer my thanks and congratulations, the Lincoln Education Association and the Board of Education and LPS as a district share a great partnership, and the teachers are very, very, very big part of that. So thank you to LEA and to the district for negotiating this agreement, and we look forward to bringing this back in two weeks. Moving on, items for second reading recommended for action from board committees, the newly annexed property to the city of Lincoln, Item 10.1.1. Barb, it has your name down there.
Okay, I'm going to start this out with a motion to approve 10.1.1 newly annexed property to Lincoln, and this concerns what we call the Lobo site, and I move approval.
That's the one at 84th and Van Dorn, right?
Yes, correct.
And it goes into Maxi, Lux, and East?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? Don?
I second.
It's been moved in second to approve the annexation of the area at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, and it goes to Maxi, Lux, and East High. Seeing no questions, Laura, would you please call the role?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, Item 10.2.1, these are items from the superintendent. This is an agreement for Group Travel with Barb, and that is not our Barb, but the name of the company, and I need a motion, if I could. Don?
Move approval?
Is there a second? Barb?
Yes, I second it. No relation.
And just for a brief, a brief synopsis of what this is, Don, do you want to, do you want to give the brief synopsis on this?
Well, this would be just what we reviewed at the last meeting, but I would refer to staff for the, Dr. Standish.
How about Dr. Salem? Which one of you?
Dr. Salem?
Yep. So this was the travel with Barb for the Ban items that we talked about at the previous meeting.
Barb almost became a travel agent.
Yeah, almost. Hey, Barb.
Well, I'll go and say that my son many years ago went on this trip with Ban from Lincoln High to San Antonio and really loved it.
Good.
And we do a rotating system, so all of our high schools get an opportunity to have a travel opportunity.
Yep, we did. So this is, at the last meeting, we talked about the different schools and the ones that were actually in the consent agenda rather than on the first reading. That just happens year over year. There are different changes to the groups that they want. want to bring for those trips. Some take all of their music groups, some take individual, just band, or just orchestra. And so it just depends on the size of the group, the travel location that they select for those meetings, or for those trips.
This way, nobody will have any questions that we didn't know what we were voting on.
Yep.
I appreciate your help. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danik.
Yes. The next item is the state 21st century community learning center continuation applications. It's Nola Derby Bennett. Actually, it says Sarah, Marco, and Nola, so there we go. But I know who runs the CLCs.
Okay, so this one is renewal applications for two of our grants. The first one is for Calvert Park and North Star. That will be for years 16 through 20. The second one is for Arnold, McPhee, Norwood Park, and Dawes, and that will be for years 21 through 25.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Annie?
I move we approve. 10.2.2.
And Barb?
I second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the continuation grants for the community learning centers. Any other concerns, questions? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Mrs. Danik.
Yes. And item 10.2.3, state 21st century communing, community learning center new grant applications.
All right, I'll take this one as well. So we have not had the opportunity to apply for new 21st century funding since 2019, and so this is the first opportunity that we've had. This would be adding four additional schools. Those schools would be Kuzer, Meadow Lane, Roper, and Sco.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Annie?
I move that we do this. 10.2.3.
Barb?
Yes, second.
Been moved and seconded that we submit the grants for new community learning centers at Kuzer, Meadow Lane, Roper, and Sco. And just from my perspective, this is really a welcome addition to that part of town. So thank you. Seeing no other questions or concern, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Mrs. Danik.
Yes. Moving on, we have no expedited emergency items. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. Informational items and reports from board committees. Are there any questions or concerns from board committees? Seeing none. Special appointments? Seeing none. Superintendent update?
Thank you, thank you. Just want to note that I have received any number of unsolicited student emails urging a snow day tomorrow. And of course, we have well-established criteria and protocols in place for making those determinations. That said, as a former high school English teacher, I find the great persuasive writing of some of these students to be quite compelling. And in particular, wanted to say to Addison, to Joe, the aspiring meteorologist at Southeast High School, to Dominic, AKA Chill Guy, don't leave us out in the cold. Thank you. Thank you for your input and for our consideration. Wanted to just note a few things from the prior couple of weeks that were special events. Annie gave an awesome introductory welcoming speech, and we attended the Spelling Bee hosted at Color Middle School last weekend. Just wanted to give a shout-out to Sarah Danielson, our ELA curriculum specialist, and J.J. Dougdale, our secondary reading specialist, and others. The host, principal, Daniel Church, attended. It was great. 37th Annual Spelling Bee. So think about this, pop quiz, okay? Pop quiz. Here's, here's a few of the words. Respiratory, I can barely pronounce it. Parroting, anomaly.
Bellwether.
Ride, and...
And the one that, what was it?
Tsunami.
Oh, and ailment.
Yes.
Not elementary, ailimentary. The funny thing is, sitting next, we were sitting next to each other, and we were both doing this. Spelling with our hands going, oh, we got it, we were giving it away. And I'm like, no, I'm not giving anything away on how to spell ailimentary.
Imagine being a middle school student. And those words are challenging enough. You're a middle school student, and you are getting up in an auditorium, walking onto and across the stage, under the light, into the microphone, and being given that word, single-word pronunciation, and you've got to stand and deliver. Really awesome group of students and pretty cool event. Wanted to thank Josh Jones, our CTA, or TCA director, and the great team at the Career Academy, and our SCC partners as well. Today, I had the opportunity to attend part of the Future Educators Day that they do annually. Phenomenal event. There were over 100 LPS students in attendance there who are saying, Dr. Price, they got my attention, they are saying, we want to pursue a career path in education. And it was just great to have some time to talk with that group and help solidify for them their commitment to the profession and the incredible rewards of the vocation. And believe me, I invited them to all go out there, get the credential, and come on back, you know, come on back to us within LPS. Finally, tonight, I would like to take a second here and reference that we have a special invited guest in our presence. In the preceding weeks, we've gone through the candidate review and finalist interviews process for our next Associate Superintendent for Civic Engagement. After vetting and interviewing, we were thrilled to be able to invite Brad Jacobson to join our LPS team. Brad is sitting in back, principal of Ashland Greenwood High School, currently someone who's got incredible experience and credibility, advocating for public schools for many years, having testified in front of the legislature, and served in every NCSA leadership capacity, and many honors, including the NCSA Distinguished Service Award. And just wanted to say, we know you're not officially underway until July 1, but take a moment to say welcome to LPS, Brad.
Okay, all right. We have announcements of upcoming events. February 16th and 17th, the Nebraska Association of School Board Training in Kearney. February 16th, the GNSA meeting at 9:30 a.m. at NCSA. Face the Chamber, 12 p.m. at the Country Club. On February 20th, we have the LEAFR Council, 4:15, at the Bryant Community Focus Program. And February 25th, we have the next board meeting right here at the SJDLC at 6 p.m. We do not have any closed session. We do have a request, or excuse me, we do not have any public comment. We do have a request for closed session. Is there a motion? Barb?
I move approval of 16.1, a request for closed session for items number one, negotiations, and number seven, legal advice.
Is there a second? Annie?
Let's do it. I second that.
Been moved and seconded that we go into closed sessions for item number one, negotiations, and number seven, legal advice. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danik.
Yes. This meeting will be recessed and then adjourned following our closed session.